You know, the saying, you know, growing old is not for sissies. And so it's a very difficult demographic. And the way you manage and handle them.
I've not heard that saying before.
Me either.
It's true. But the way you manage, you know, the population and, you know, with, you know, just grace and with, you know, just openness and so on. So, you know, we're all going to miss you without question.
Thank you so much for your kind words. I am going to miss Monday lunch and all your help. And Steve comes every Monday and helps us divvy out Monday lunch. And we do have a good time.
We do have a good time.
And Fran Blake, yeah. I am very grateful for that.
We have a good time.
Maybe I'll come back and help you. I don't know. We'll see.
Clearly, we're all going to miss you.
And I'll miss everybody here. But I'm not going to lie, I'm pretty excited about.
I was going to just segue into that, Joanne.
You were, yeah.
You are going to like it. Now, you may not, you may not like hanging out with Bob.
Well, we got to figure that part out, right?
You're going to like, you're going to like your time.
I am. I'm certainly looking forward to it.
So best wishes.
Thank you so much.
So, Joanne, I just want to thank you as well. I don't know you quite as well as Steve. I don't spend quite as much time at the Senior Center. But every time I have and every time I've interacted with you, it has been positive. And through getting to know some of your staff and how they work with you, I know that you have been the true driving force and the true lead at that Senior Center. I believe you've done a good job, that you have people who will continue the work that you've started and that you have implemented there. And I think that is certainly a sign of a really good leader. As someone who makes sure that when they are ready to step away, that they have people that are going to keep doing the great things that you've already implemented. So, thank you for your work. Enjoy your retirement. I've heard it's a lot of fun. But just, but just thank you. And please come back and participate, and we would all love to see you again.
I have to say, we enjoy your father, too.
Thank you.
Her dad has joined our group. He's a character.
He is certainly a character. I think he is. It's, it was one of those things to, to get him to go the first time was like, oh. But now, I think he's found some people and playing cards and just enjoying it. So, and that, to me, is a sign that what you're doing is great for someone like him who is not much of a group person. And for him to feel welcome and comfortable and wants to go back is, is really a great sign and true to you and your staff of what you're doing there. So, thank you. Congratulations and enjoy the retirement.
The only thing I would like to add is just, you know, the, the community that you've created at the Senior Center, it's, it's, you know, the resource for our seniors to be able to have that place, to be able to come and be together and, you know, be able to be online and to be able to do all these things. And the connection is really key. I think especially, you know, coming back from COVID. I think the, the seniors, you know, knowing from my mom's experience, have really, had really felt the isolation along, you know, with COVID. And I know that the Senior Center did a huge outreach during COVID. And so, you know, it's, it's, we're going to miss you. And I hope you enjoy your retirement and, and thank you for 20 years of service. And so, we have a, we have a, Steve does the best, does the best presentations of these coins. So, I'm going to let Steve do the presentation of our, of our Select Board, Board of Selectment coin.
This is a challenge coin. And a challenge coin actually comes from the military. If you remember, Tony had his challenge coins, right? And so, the whole thing with, you know, you always carry this. If you don't, then you're caught in an establishment and somebody challenges you, it's, you're buying, right?
Right, yeah.
That doesn't work here, but this is.
Wait a second, it doesn't?
We, we had these made before we changed the name of the board to Select Board. So, the Board of Selectment. So, we affectionately call this the BS coin. It's got the town seal on one side and then the town hall on the rear. So, this is.
I think we deserve, we should get a picture.
Yes, sure.
Definitely.
So, we want a picture with, with you and your colleagues.
Yeah, yeah. Bring everybody up. We'll do you guys and then we'll do us. Or we can do you guys all together. Flash at us. Or we can hand rock them all after. Oh, he's got a selfie. You're going to be both. All right, Steve, you should stand next to him. Stand in the middle there. Steve, come on this side.
It's true. Competition, right?
Come join us. I'll join you. Just do a challenge one and then one of us. That's fantastic. You seem to do it. I know, I know, it feels well. It's just who I am. I can't get it.
All right. Smile. Good one, Jen.
Now, Steve, join us so Diane can. Okay, now, we're going to step away. Now, I apologize. I'm sorry, even since I'm past. She's the family, not the extent.
Open your ears. Good, thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Yeah, that was great. So, thank you to everybody for, for being here with us. So, we have, so it's 7:36. We have a little time before our, your next hearing. So.
Is it official here that we have to start right at 8:00 PM?
We can move that up.
Can we move it up?
Well, it's a continuation. It is a continuation from the previous, so.
So, we should wait till later. All right.
Just in case there's. Okay. So, all right. So, moving on to old new business, we can discuss the reappointment process. I know Susan had asked to include this on the agenda, just to kind of, Susan, I think it's just to verify what the, what the process looks like so we know what to, basically what we have for August, correct?
Yeah, basically, I, my takeaway from the last meeting wasn't clear. So, I did a few different things. And I was hoping that I was going in the direction that the board wanted, but I'm willing to modify whatever you want so that we can get it done timely.
Okay, great. So, I know you had posted all the, all the committee openings up on the website. And you had created a Google form for folks that wanted to be reappointed. It's a very simple, easy form that then populates a Google spreadsheet, correct?
That's correct.
And so, you had reached out to all the folks that are currently serving and are currently up for reappointment with, with that Google form, correct?
That's, that's correct.
Okay. And then also, because we have all these openings posted on our website, we have our regular Talent Bank Form that folks can decide to apply if, if they want to, they want to serve. And we've received some new ones as well on that.
Correct.
Okay. So, I guess the question is, do we want, is there anything that we see that we want to make changes to? Or do, are we good with this process?
I think I'm good with the process. I like the form. Susan, thank you for making that form so that if people are up for reappointment, Susan has sent them the, an email with the form saying, if you want to be reappointed, just fill this out. I think that's a lot, I'm hoping that then is a lot easier for Susan because it then fills in the Google form and so we can track that. Susan, I did have one question. On the list that you provided in our packet for people who are up for reappointment, some of the names are bolded and some are not. Are the ones bolded people who have already responded?
That's exactly it.
Perfect. Great. So, if they're not bolded, then they have not responded yet to your email or filled out the form.
Correct.
Okay. So, if that's the case, what I would say is to people watching, and we need to remind them, if you are up for reappointment and you want to be reappointed, please go online and fill out that reappointment form so that we know that you want to be reappointed. That's it.
So, I, I agree, Susan. I like the process you've set up. You know, it's straightforward, easy to understand. I like the spreadsheet with, that lists all of the Talent Bank Form respondents along with their interest along the, the top of committee. Now, my question is, I'm assuming that every Talent Bank Form that comes in is sent to the, to the various committees that that person identifies?
That's correct.
Okay. And so, I'm going to use as an example tonight, just the Town Forest Committee. They've got four people that are potentially interested in the Town Forest Committee. Now, how do we, at this point, we're going to be appointing relatively soon. How do we know what the, you know, what the committee's position is relative to, to these potential applicants? So, what kind of process is it? Do we need to reach out to all the committees and say, hey, look, the board is reappointing? Do you have recommendations that you would like to make that are different than, you know, that may be different?
Are you asking me that question?
Sure.
Basically, I think that's a good idea, but that's kind of where it got great for me. So, that's why I asked to have this on. I was looking for clarity if you were expecting something more from me.
Okay. All right. Well, I think it's something we should talk about as far as how we, I guess, communicate as the appointing authority to the particular board chairs and say, hey, look, you know, these folks are coming up for appointment. These folks are interested. What do you want to do? What's your recommendation?
And I don't think there's that many committees that have multiple people that are looking for reappointment or for new appointments. And I think Susan's done a really good job, when someone applies, to forward them to the chair so that they can start attending some meetings. Now, some of these committees may not have meetings between now and we reappoint at the end of August. I like the idea of reaching out to the chairs. And maybe we look at the list of reappointments and ones who have multiples, and we split up the different committees and we each take a couple to reach out to.
Okay. We could do that.
Yeah, yeah. I think we do need to reach out, particularly if there's any, any issues, extenuating circumstances that we may, may not be aware of.
Right.
And that we want some, some input from that, that committee, so.
So, based on the list, because Steve, you printed it out, how many committees have more people applying than are vacant? Or did you not do?
I did not.
Oh, you didn't do that? Okay, okay.
No. But I can.
I mean, I, I, if, if you have the time, I'd be comfortable with you, if you want to.
It won't take long to do.
Do that and then just assign them, I would think.
That's fine.
If that, if that's okay with the chair and that you're willing to do that, Steve. You know?
It won't take long.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay.
Thank you, Steve.
Do we need to vote on that or not? I don't think so.
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
Just clerk work.
Thank you for doing that. Appreciate it.
Okay. So, so Susan, we will take care of that and then, but no changes to the, the current Google form and the process that, that you've kind of started. It looks like that there were, I think, 12 people that had responded to the Google form. And there's, I think there's 17 or so that are outstanding. So, but, but the form is, is easy. It's basically just asks people what, what committee and their name and if they're interested in being reappointed. It's pretty straightforward, so.
Can we ask that Susan send it out one more time, maybe at the beginning of August?
Yeah, actually, I think I, I was looking at the Google form. I think there's a way to send out like a reminder email through it, which is even easier.
Okay.
So, maybe if, Susan, if you don't mind doing that in the next couple of weeks, that would be great.
No problem.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Great.
Good. Thank you, Susan. Well done.
Yes, thank you for that.
We still have a few minutes before 8:00. Do we want to talk about the, the open meeting law complaints, costs, findings? We had talked about having just some, some numbers in front of us to see what we were looking at from, from an open meeting law, public records request standpoint. So, Michael, Brittany, Jen had put together a summary.
Yes. So, just to go through the costs. So, Diane had put together a listing of the costs. Susan had gone through and looked at different open meeting law violations and what the determinations were. So, I'll just go through the costs. And what you have in your packet first is a spreadsheet that lists, I believe, over the last year, the different, the different public records requests that we have received, sorted by requester. And as you tell, there's some that make more requests than others. But in the end, for public records requests, we spent only in legal costs, just legal costs, $13,371. This doesn't include the staff time associated with processing those public records requests, which can be very, very involved, first of all, you know, with the town clerk's office. And then it gets assigned to different department heads based on what the request is and who might have the information. So, that's, that's almost incalculable because it is so involved and touches several different hands. Open meeting law violations, again, Susan has put together and provided just a list as part of an email for you to look at just some of the recent open meeting law violations that we've had through 20, or, excuse me, open meeting law complaints that we've had through 2021 and 2022, and what the results of those are. Susan actually refreshed that information recently. There, there isn't really too much to add other than what she has, what she's provided. And again, open meeting law violations, they're not just the legal costs associated with that, but the time involved in processing those, answering those, putting together a response, whether we go through legal counsel or not.
Is there a, a estimate or a number, a cost for the least?
For the open meeting law?
Yeah.
Yes. It is $14,076. So, in total, between the public record, excuse me, 13.
Yeah, $14,076.
So, between the public records requests and open meeting law complaints, we've spent a total in the last year of 27,000, almost $27,500 in legal costs.
Known costs without calculating staff time and so on.
Correct.
Right. Like, just anecdotally, is this, is this generally consistent? Do we know, like, year over year, if this is, generally the trend is going up? If it's sort of somewhat, I mean, I know, you know, it's probably more from a time standpoint. You could probably talk about, like, how much staff time is being taken up by open meeting law requests or public records requests versus in years past?
Yeah. And I will say, just what I'm about to say is really just anecdotal. So, don't have some exact evidence in front of me to support this. But I would say that in general, it goes in phases. I do feel like recently, the trend has been, we've been seeing more public records requests and more open meeting law complaints that we've had to, to process. I'd say that's the case over the last year. You know, and I think in some cases with the open meeting law complaints, there have been violations. And we've tried to be very, very upfront about those and acknowledge those. When we do feel like we've, we've made an error and have tried to rectify those on our own, unfortunately, the person making the complaint can sometimes, not necessarily, you know, we try in good faith, I guess you could say, to try to address some of these. And sometimes, I think it feels like it's not met with that same good faith effort.
So, I'm looking through this list and there's not a lot, but there's a couple that say, waiting for requester. And some of them aren't too old, you know, February, March, that's not too bad. But I'm noticing, I think there was one here from '21? That's waiting for, yeah, from, I mean, it's, it's, it's a school department one, but there's also a planning one. So, when it says waiting for requester, that means that we've sent them some information and we're waiting for them to accept it or reply before we can close it?
Correct.
And is there a specific timeframe that we have to give them before they reply? So, we can say, you know what? We've sent them the information and we can close it so we don't have to keep tracking this?
I don't believe there is. I think it is pretty open-ended, depending on some of the requests. So, we're not allowed to necessarily close it out. Sometimes, we may be waiting for payment. So, if we've provided a cost estimate and they don't, it's not by a time certain. And so, a couple of months down the road, they could come down and say, you know what? I actually really do need that information and I'm willing to pay for it. Or they can refine their request. So, oftentimes, if we provide a cost letter, we also allow people to refine their request or like narrow it down so that it wouldn't require so much of the paper or research.
So, again, we can thank our legislature for allowing and creating these new laws and making it even more cumbersome and burdensome to us to have to do with these, deal with these things. I mean, I, I, you know, I know it's important to be transparent and make sure people get records they want, but to, to have to then keep it open and keep tracking it, right? Because until it's resolved and closed, we have to be aware of it.
You have to keep it on.
Yeah. And I, I do think we've done a much better job over the past several years of managing open meeting law, a number of open meeting law complaints in the sense of maybe not having as good a description on our agendas.
Right.
Listing things properly and so on. And I think we've done a, a better job of that. And I think that we're obligated to do that. It's not, you know, I don't think there's any defense of not doing it the right way. And I think we should be providing as much information as possible within, within, you know, the agenda document, so. But I think we've, we've gotten a lot better with it.
I think so, too.
I agree, definitely.
Yeah. Does anybody else have any questions or?
No, it's, it's good to have that number, though, to understand what we're spending. And again, as Michael said, that's just in the legal costs from what our legal team is. And of course, there's then the time for our staff, so.
Well, and we do have a specific one that we need to talk about, which is actually a very good example of what we talk about in terms of good faith efforts and trying to get reciprocation with that. We did have a violation, or excuse me, a open meeting law complaint regarding a vote that was taken in an executive session regarding a memorandum of understanding. And so, the complaint was made that, that should have been done in open session. After referring to the law and looking at what is required, a vote is not required in open session. But we were supposed to essentially discuss what was, what was voted on and provide public disclosure of what the contents of that was. So, we did not do that. And Susan tried to basically get in front of this and provide all the information and provide all the documentation. And unfortunately, that wasn't good enough. So, we had received another open meeting law complaint. So, just because we hadn't filed a response in time. So, that's, that's unfortunate.
So, Michael, I have a question. I know sometimes we have been in open session or executive session to discuss some of these and actually vote them or, you know, help determine what the response is going to be. I would think that if it's acknowledged that something was missing or we didn't do it the way that we should have, but there's no real vote or it doesn't have to come back to us in open session, that a response like that should work. And have we heard back from the state on this response? That Susan responded with the, you know, Susan responded with the information that was left out and?
Yeah. And what we, the response that we've been given before is that we do have, you do have to respond as a board to those.
Oh, okay.
So, we can't necessarily just have staff members go ahead and provide information, like Susan provide information, or in this case where the town clerk had to.
Right.
Took, took the initiative and tried to respond to that, so.
So, do we then get some, not slack, but the response is required within 10 days? Obviously, if we have, we don't, we, you know, we meet every two weeks, which is more than 10 days unless it's just business days. And in the summer, we have a revised schedule, right? Like, we're meeting now and we have a tentative meeting for August 3rd. But if we realize we don't need it, we might not do it. And event, originally, we were going to go from July 13th to August 24th, I think it is. So, how could we as a board even respond as a board? Because we can't, we can't do it via email. We can't vote to do anything via email. So, how would we, how would we even respond in a timely manner?
We could ask for an extension.
Oh, okay.
To respond.
Okay.
Which is something that we probably should do with this one.
Yeah, I would, I would say, because we're obviously not going to vote on anything tonight and we'll take it up at our next meeting.
Yeah, we usually provide our next meeting so they are, they're understanding why we're asking for an extension.
Okay.
And so, it's usually a problem.
So, we'll plan to take action next meeting? Okay.
Great. Thank you.
That works. Okay. Anything else on, on that particular issue?
No, only if you had any, just really more informational purposes, more than anything for the board's request.
Thank you and thank you to Diane for pulling all that information together and.
Appreciate that.
Yep. Okay. We have, we are getting really close to 8:00. We have four minutes. Yeah, we can, we can talk about the MBTA Station Maintenance, Capital Improvements and Next Steps. So, this was put on by, by, asked to be put on the agenda by Joe Mignani, who's not, not here with us tonight. And Rob Share, who's our representative to the MBTA Advisory Board, is also not here with us tonight. So, I don't know if we necessarily can, can thoroughly discuss this or not. But I did want to just throw out there that, that what we possibly might want to look at is start talking to our legislative delegation about, you know, helping to advocate for maintenance and some, some real investment from the MBTA at our station. Because we had put together a letter, I think it was sent out the end of April.
March or April?
Yeah. To Brian Kane at the MBTA Advisory Board. Obviously, Rob's not here to talk about sort of any, any progress that, that's happened on that. But I think we do need to kind of bring this to Senate President Spolka's attention and.
I would think unfortunately, and you being someone who used to take the train all the time, I drove by the train station at, I don't know, 3:15, 3:20 this afternoon, and it was basically empty. So, they are not seeing the revenues. They're not seeing people using the train. Not that that's necessarily our concern, but to some extent, it's like, okay, if they don't have the funds to do it, it's unfortunate, but we gotta. I support sending a letter and saying, what can we do? And what can we, what kind of support can we get?
Okay. So, unless anybody else has any comments, questions, I think what we'll do is just push that to our next meeting. And so, when we have a full board, we can talk about it. Make sense? Sound good? All right. Great. All right. We can go ahead and start the, I think we can start the hearing. Okay. Awesome. Okay. So, we have a continuation of a, of a, of a hearing that we had from our June 15th, 2022 meeting, which was a reconsideration of designation of dangerous dog owned by Cara, Terrell and Ed Perry. Could I get a motion to reopen the hearing?
Motion to reopen the hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So, we had received a request from. So we had received a request from Cara Terrell and her husband Ed Perry. So from, there was a, there was a hearing that took place on November seventh, twenty-eighteen, where their dog Coco was classified as a dangerous dog. They had, there were some conditions that the, that the select board had put on, on the dog at the time. And Cara and Ed have, have asked us for reconsideration of Coco's status. They are looking to possibly foster and adopt children. And they wanted to, to, to come before us and make the, make the case that Coco, the dog is, has, that they basically have complied with all the, the requests that have come from the select board. And we also have our animal control officer Donna Walsh here today. So, so I'll ask if anyone is here to speak in favor of lifting the, the dangerous dog. You wanna, Cara, you can, yeah, yep, you can come on.
Hi, I'm Cara Terrell, Three Hilldale Place. And Brandy, as you introduced, my husband and I are getting to a different stage in our life, our children are a little older. And we had started to think about fostering children. And as you guys know, it's a, it's a really tough thing to go through when we started the process. And unbeknownst to us, because the dangerous dog hearing was labeled five years ago, the DCF said to us, we can't foster children because of that. And that's, that was really upsetting and pretty disturbing to us. Because, you know, Coco had never hurt a child or any person. That was not the issue, or even a domestic animal. It was about the chickens originally, which was an awful experience for everyone. And we, we wanted to just let people know that, or let you know that not only did we comply with the recommendations, we came up with several more. And it's been five years without any, you know, Donna Walsh is here to say no other reported incident to the town. She has never hurt any other child again. So just to review, I had paid the fines, you know, right away, we had offered to pay and reimburse for the, the chickens and that was declined. We had several behavioral assessments done for Coco. And all the, and I had said to you guys, the documentation and all the documentation reported that the, all the trainers had said there was no signs of aggression to children, other people, other animals, other dogs, cats. There was never an issue. She's ten years old now. So after that, we had started more intense training. We had did, done the desensitization training, which is exposure to birds and basically shocking her so that it would be a negative consequence. So we've done that with several different times. We've continued with the training over the several years. We have reinforced all the perimeters of our gates. We don't let her outside unsupervised. She has an e-collar, a prong collar and usually on leash or in our, you know, immediate care anytime we're out. And again, we've fostered over sixty dogs, puppies, numerous kittens, numerous litter of kittens. She has never hurt them, harmed them, Bay Path and American Lab Rescue have written letters, and I think you have them, stating that there has never been an incident, there was never any concern that they had because of that. And not only we, and we had people at the, originally mothers of children who had allowed their children in my house, plus my own children are very safe in my house. So the allegation was that if a foster child has a stuffed animal, that Coco would attack them. And I, I think, you know, Donna Walsh will, will reinforce this, but anybody that has knowledge of dog behavior and this incident is that's not, that's not reality. And that's not consistent with the behavior, the assessments and all the documentation that we have. So this incident did happen, it was awful. But it would be really a shame that we couldn't help children in these situations because of that. We still will have a big, big mountain to climb after that because of this. But at this point, if this can be one piece that we can readdress, and I appreciate your consideration, then we might have an opportunity to do that and continue to make sure that that would never happen again as well.
Is there anyone else that wanted to speak in favor? I see, I see Ed on Zoom. I don't know if Ed wants to add anything.
Sure, I'll pop in, I'm sitting in the woods here. Ed Perry, Three Hilldale Place, Big Tree, Mushrooms. Yeah, I mean, we've been working with Coco. We've had numerous kittens crawling on her, sleeping with her, licking her ears. She, she's not a dangerous animal. You know, and, and, and like Cara said, we, we really wanna continue our help. We've helped animals, we've helped dogs, kittens, cats, litters. We wanna help children, we, you know, we're at that next step. How do we, how do we try to continue to help others and enrich ourselves at the same time? And like Cara said, there's, there's a lot to go forward with this process. And this is a big, this is an important piece of it. So we appreciate your consideration in this and look forward to the outcome.
Thank you, Ed. So I know we did receive a letter from Susan Perino, who was the woman with, that owned the chickens, who had said that she was opposed to us lifting this dangerous dog. And, you know, she had, she had made some insinuations about Coco. Susan Robey had did some due diligence, had reached out to some of the people that, that Ms. Perino had concerns about. Nothing was substantiated, we had no other feedback about anything with, with Coco, no specifics. So I just wanted to let you know that. And so, so thank you to, to Susan Robey for, for, for helping, helping with that process. Susan, has there any been, has there been any other communications from anyone else other than Ms. Perino?
Yeah, I think I provided you the notes. There was one person that I had spoken to that had given me some accounts on some interactions that they had had with Coco.
Yep, I think we all, we all have that.
We all have that, yes.
Yes, so, thank you. And so we have Donna Walsh, our animal control officer, would you like to come up? I know we, we received a letter from you in our packets on this, but I don't know if you wanna come and, come and speak as well.
Donna Walsh, Ashland Animal Control, good evening. So I did write a recommendation. I feel that under the circumstances, with everything that's been accomplished with this dog, we haven't had any substantiated allegations. I've had nothing, no reports of anything. So for me, I am comfortable if the board decides they want to reverse the decision.
Okay, thank you.
I feel they've gone above and beyond.
And so just, just to clarify, they've complied with everything that we had put in our, in our order? Everything was, was?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Do you guys have questions?
Yeah, just, first of all, I wanna acknowledge all, all the efforts that you've done. I know you were proactive when the event happened and I think we all appreciated that. And, but I, you know, given this unsubstantiated information that we received, I do have to ask you, is there any validity to this?
I only came here tonight to respond to the incident that we were talking about. I don't know what else you're talking about. So right now, I'm, I'm only gonna address what.
Okay.
I was prepared, I, I don't know what she's talking, I, I, sorry, Susan, I didn't know what she's talking about. I know that many of my friends, neighbors and community members have been investigated with this five years later after this has happened. And it's been really destructive to me and, you know, my family, the, the original hearing, my family was maligned. My son was, you know, there was a lot of criticism that I, that I really had to take. And at the time, I worked for the town, so I really did feel like I had to just
Sure.
Kinda comply. And I think the most important thing to, is that, is the original recommendation from Donna Walsh was not dangerous dog. So the board went against her recommendation.
We did, we did at that time, based on, on master general law and the way we, we interpreted master general law. And I think we also had some feedback from legal counsel as well at that time. But, you know, be that as it may, you know, without reading this, all of this, basically, I guess you would call it hearsay at this, at this time.
And I'm here, I, I think Steve, that needs to be known, I'm here.
It does.
Tonight, nobody else is.
But I'm asking you, that's who I'm asking, right? So, but basically, it gets to the fact that, that Coco has been, been loose at various times. And I'm, again, this is hearsay, and there's been other, another event with, with a domestic animal. So I'm just asking for my own concerns and I think for the board, because we're, we're looking to reverse a decision here. And so, again, the question is, is there any validity to those kinds of, of either accusations or, or hearsay information? As far as, you know, from your, from your knowledge?
Right, I can only address what I know.
Right.
Which is this incident was the incident that we're talking about.
Okay.
That's all I can address.
So that's the twenty-eighteen incident?
I think, is it twenty-six?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eighteen, yes, yes.
So I guess I have a question, the information that was provided to us, was that not shared?
It sounds like it was not shared.
Yeah, it, it was not shared. So we had received and then, we had received a complaint and so we had done our own investigation. And we found no subs, we found no correlation or substantiation to the fact that a claim was made that there was another attack.
So the, the people that, that Ms. Perino had specifically mentioned, Susan reached out to, so.
Right, and again, just to clarify, this was not, this was not people, this is not dogs, this is not cats. We're still talking about chickens, right?
Right, yep.
Yeah, so I, you know, I'm good with your answer.
Yeah.
I actually, you've answered already another question I had, it was just, you know, now that you're looking to bring children into your home, how is Coco with kids and with, with other adults and so on? And I think you've answered that pretty well, so.
I mean, I could probably have about a hundred people come in and say, what a great dog she is. But again, I, I, I've worked a lot with Donna Walsh, I've worked for the town. I think dogs make dog decisions. So I would never assure someone my dog is perfect and would never act up. But I know probably very securely that the measures we've taken, the training we've done and her personality and the assessments we've had by specialists and evaluators is that she would never hurt a child or a teen. We have, our teens are like six feet tall. But she's also, you know, a very comforting dog to, to both my children, so. And all the kittens we had and the sixty puppies we had. Not, not, not all at once.
Thank you.
Ed would, Ed wouldn't allow that.
Hey, we're, we're all dog owners here at one time or another, so we know, we know the drill.
And I think that the important thing is like, you know, that if, if the training for Coco has been successful and, you know, I know that you had specifically done some prey drive training, which, you know, obviously is geared towards birds and such. And that Coco hasn't exhibited any aggression towards any humans. Cause, you know, obviously, we wanna make sure that whatever decision we make is, is, is in the best interest for anyone that comes into your house, so.
Right. And I think that, you know, I, I get that, I, I know everybody here, I know a lot of people in town. I think that my integrity and my character and my experience and my involvement, hopefully lends itself to that as well, that I would not want a child in my house that my, a dog would hurt either. That would never be a possibility.
Does anyone have any additional questions or comments?
No, Steve asked, Steve asked the questions that I had, so.
Okay, okay, so, could I get a motion to close the public hearing?
I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are we ready to take a vote?
I think so.
Okay. Is there a motion to, so I guess the question is, we have a couple options, we could, we could, you know, if we deci, decide, we could decide to, to make Coco a nuisance dog, correct? Or is it just lifting?
I think by definition, I think, uh, no.
No.
That's the way I read it. I think we either rescind the, reverse
The dangerous dog.
The dangerous dog and, you know, with the understanding that if, you know, an event happens in, in, in the future, then we'll address it at that point in time.
Okay, all right. I just wanna make sure that we, you know, that, yeah.
So I'm gonna make the motion, but I just wanna say something beforehand. I know this has been difficult. And I would just ask that you keep doing what you're doing with Coco. Obviously, a dog that's ten years old versus a dog that's five years old and you've continued the training, you know, we know they mellow. But I would also then ask that should something happen, you let us know. Because I think, I think it's important, you know, we're, we're, we're looking to work with you and I would just ask that you work with us. With that, I move that we remove the dangerous dog designation for Coco.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And good luck with the.
Good luck with the fostering process.
So.
Thank you.
And, and good luck with Coco.
Yes.
Cause we want, we want the best for, for all of you guys.
I know, I know.
So.
I do know that, yes, I appreciate it. It, it has been very difficult, but I'm, I'm here for it. You know, I'm okay with that, so thank you, and I wanted to thank Donna too.
Yeah, good, thank you Donna.
Thank you.
Good luck, Ed.
Yes, good luck.
You got it, thanks.
If you need any tips, let me know, Cara.
You guys, you guys aren't, aren't taking the empty nesting thing quietly.
No, I was not laying down on that.
Oh, man, good for you guys.
Yeah, but the difference between the five and six.
Did I say that out loud?
I think about Max, you know?
Okay.
Okay. All right, so we, the next thing on our agenda is discuss holding a retreat for purposes.
Proposed process for a master plan and timeline?
Oh, sorry, yep, we, we skipped over, yep, let's go, let's go back to the comprehensive plan or a master plan and timeline. We wanna talk about the meeting that we held with the planning board, how do we, you wanna go ahead?
Yeah, you know, I think, just recap where we are, or where we are up to this point. The board did have a joint meeting with the planning board, I thought there was some good discussion. I provided a proposal to both boards to consider, based largely on Wellesley's Unified Plan approach. I do know that the planning board had a retreat after the, the joint board meeting, had a discussion amongst themselves about the, the proposal and some of the ancillary things regarding the, the master plans, slash comprehensive plans, slash strategic plan process. And so, Brandy, I believe you've had conversations with the chair of the, the planning board?
Yep, so I, I talked to Tricia Kendall. And, you know, one of the things that, I mean, Tricia had said that they, they worked through a lot of things at the retreat. They're gonna talk about it again at their meeting tomorrow night. You know, one of the things I reiterated to Tricia is really how important the partnership between the planning board and the select board really is on this. We wanna make sure that we include the goals and the vision and, you know, really be engaged in the planning for this, this plan, because this is gonna set the stage for the next ten to fifteen years. As well as, you know, all the work that has already been put into working on our strategic plan. I think, you know, I think that is also kind of part of this process as well. So I think that the, the plan that Michael had put together was pretty comprehensive. Tricia had said that there, you know, they still need to discuss some things. But I think, I think the next best step is for us to have another joint meeting with the planning board, because I think we do need to probably iron out some of those details. The goal really would be to be able to, you know, we're gonna need to basically hire a consultant to help us with this process. And so the idea is to be able to, to put out an RFP before town meeting so we know what the costs of this consultant potentially would be and put together a group to be able to, to help move the, the RFP process forward so that by November town meeting, we are in a position to, to ask the town for, for funding and actually kind of lay out a little bit of what we want to do with this, so. So I had mentioned to Tricia that we probably, that there was a good chance that we might be meeting on the. So I had mentioned to Tricia that we probably, that there was a good chance that we might be meeting, um, on the third of August. I don't know, I don't know what the planning board's availability is for that date. I also don't know, um, what the feasibility would be to try to get a different date on the calendar for both boards at this point during the summer. So, but, you know, I think that, I think that the, um, I think we'll get close to, to, I don't think that the, there's gonna be a lot of
Yeah.
back and forth.
Just a, a question, you know, we don't have a full board here tonight and just want to make sure that, you know, our board is in concert and unison with, you know, what we are seeing, uh, for this process. And, uh, I suspect we are, but I don't know that tonight, right? And I think we need to have our conversation as well. Almost before, I think before we meet with the planning board again. And to make sure that we are unified behind a, you know, I think personally, I think this is a great opportunity to collaborate with, uh, another board and really create a unique document for this town, something that is never been done before and, you know, hopefully won't sit on a shelf like every other plan that we've ever done. Right? And I think we have a unique opportunity to do that. So, but I don't, you know, I'm, I'm assuming that we're all in alignment, but I don't know that tonight.
Yeah, that's a good point. That's a really good point, actually.
Yeah, I would second that because we haven't had a discussion as a board after that meeting with the planning board.
Yeah, and I don't, you know, I know, we, we always seem to put ourselves in this position where we need to, we need to make decisions now because we needed to get it on a warrant and we need to get it at town meeting and so on. But, you know, and maybe we can do that here, I don't know. I don't want to put barriers where you, it's not necessary, but at the same time, you know, I think we need to, we need to have our discussion too.
Yeah, yeah. No, I agree.
I, I would second with Steve. I would almost think that on our meeting on the third, we need to have a discussion, hopefully with the full board will be here. And then look at putting a date between then and our next meeting at the end of August.
With the planning board.
With the planning board. So that we can then vote something at our meeting on the twenty fourth.
Yeah. And I know I've talked to, I know we, we're gonna talk about a retreat later on, but we can segue into it if you'd like. And I've advocated both with you and with Michael for using that August third meeting as a retreat. And, uh, you know, we can still conduct business, we can still sign notes, uh, we can still do Michael's evalu- evaluation. But we can also have a retreat. So just a thought.
Okay.
So would, would we do, it would be an open meeting retreat? I mean, all, they're all open meetings, but I mean on camera or?
No, what we could do is we could have, you know, we could have, um, like a regular meeting up here, uh, in a hybrid fashion and then we can adjourn to go downstairs and have a retreat.
Yeah.
Okay. Why don't we, why don't we plan, let's plan to do that?
Okay, that makes sense, cause that way we're not trying to wait and find another date for the retreat.
Handle the, the, you know, more public stuff that, uh,
Right, the public stuff that it's good for, yeah, okay.
So what are we talking, August third?
Third.
August third.
And we're gonna do a regular, do we want to start at six or at seven?
Um, let's do seven.
Seven?
Yes, thank you.
For all the working people there?
Thank you.
Sorry.
Well, sorry, the, all the, you know, my, my time slots are, are different these days, so.
Yes, we understand.
I appreciate, I appreciate wanting to get, get out and like a little bit, you know, finish up a little earlier, which would be great. It's just six o'clock is, is, can be, can be kinda hairy.
Go back to those days when you were working and, you know.
You know, you're right, absolutely. I remember those days.
Thank you.
Um, so we'll plan to do that and I'll touch base with, with, uh, I'll make sure Rob and and Joe know that we're gonna plan to meet on the third. And, you know, we'll kind of have, have a open meeting slash retreat.
That'd be a good format.
Okay. Okay.
So we actually knocked off three.
Two things, three things?
Yeah, discuss adding meeting on August third.
Yeah.
Uh, the retreat and the, uh, master plan.
Alright. We're moving right along.
Rob, if you're listening.
Um, yeah, we are, we are kind of moving, moving through some of this stuff. Okay, so discuss, um, we have ho- we discuss hosting a volunteer breakfast. I know we had tabled the discussion, um, a few months ago about having a volunteer breakfast. We had talked about maybe doing something at the farmer's market. Um, and then, you know, so I wanted to just throw it out to see if we wanted to have something. It doesn't have to be a breakfast and what that might be.
Well, I have offered, um, let me put my microphone on. I have offered, and I know it's sort of, it would be short notice, but we always have it where not everyone can come. I have offered to do our volunteer, do a volunteer luncheon, um, in our backyard. And we are set up very well to do that. We host, you know, we have, we do a lot of different things, but we're about to do one with all of our theater friends for about sixty people this Saturday. Uh, so I just think it would be a little bit different, but I think because we haven't been able to do something this year, we've been putting it off, I'd like to offer it for, uh, Saturday. I think it's the thirtieth or twenty ninth of July. Again, I realize it would be, uh, so Saturday, the thirtieth of July. Afternoon, hamburgers, hot dogs. Um, because it's on our private property, I would have to say we might want to check with legal, but a BYOB. But, you know, pool, people could bring their bathing suits and just relax and have a good afternoon. We'd started it too, so people who are at the farmer's market, cause I know many of them who are volunteers for that, are also some of our boards and committees.
What's the date again you wanted?
Uh, Saturday, July thirtieth.
Do you, you have enough for parking?
Well, what we've done is people either park in our driveway or we have, um, Webster Road right across the street. So people can park there. Or carpool or walk or, um, yeah, like I said, we've had people there and, so.
I can fit four.
Um, I think that's great. So thank you very much for offering to, to host. Um, yeah, my house won't, won't hold for many, so.
Well, fortunately we'll be able to do it outside.
Yes.
So, um, but yeah.
Okay, so.
And then if, if we think that's a great, a good idea, I would work with Susan about, you know, how we want to do food and stuff, but.
Do we need to approve any use of funds or anything like that?
Probably. I don't know how that would work.
Do you remember what, what we usually do, Susan, in terms of, uh, I know we use the select board's funds for this, but do you remember like what kind of amount generally?
Um, well, it's a little tough to go back because the last couple have been a little untraditional.
Yeah.
So I could go back and pull out some figures if you want me to.
The, the other thing I would suggest is I remember a couple of years ago, we did some kind of, um, event in back of the community center. Now I know we got food, I, okay, this might be longer than a while ago. We did barbecue or something? But we had hamburgers and hot dogs and food.
We've had TJ's.
From TJ's and do.
And do, you know, I, it's a great idea. I really, it's, you know, really appreciate the, the offer.
Yep.
I have a, my questions, I guess, are more kind of because it's a town, it's actually a town sponsored event. Different than, you know.
Personal, I understand.
And, you know, are we obligated to act in, in certain ways, different than just having a, a home party? And do we have to have, you know, certified cooks there, you know?
Oh.
I would just ask the question of, of Lisa before we commit to this. And not that that would be, I mean, if, if Lisa comes back and says, yes, you need to do that, that's not a big deal.
Well, then I would say is we, we, instead of actually barbecuing there, we then get food from somebody.
Just get trace.
Right, right, like we do from TJ's at the community center.
Have to do that. I mean, there's, there are folks that have.
Or certi- right, we have safe, we have safe surf people who, yeah, who can do that. So, either way.
Yeah. But I would, I would just ask the questions and find that out. Again, not, not knowing if there's any, uh, legal exposure for the town.
Okay.
Steve, you're surf safe certified.
I am.
And I think we know a few other people that we can pull into.
Blake is, and there's a couple of liens that are, uh, surf safe.
Yep, yep.
Yeah.
So, because of the timing, because we're not meeting, should we approve this based on what we find out or? Only so that I can put it on my calendar and make sure that.
So we could go ahead and do that approval contingent on getting the okay from Lisa and answer the questions satisfactorily. But are you okay with me going ahead and making that determination with Lisa?
I am, but I guess you guys, depending on what you guys think.
I sense some discomfort.
I'm okay with it.
I guess my, my only, i- is July the thirtieth the only possible date? I mean, if.
It's either July thirtieth or.
We had to discuss it at the third.
Yeah, it's either July thirtieth or August twenty seventh.
Yeah, so maybe, maybe we, we could look at the August date and get some information.
Yeah, and that'll give us time to discuss it as, as again, as a full board.
Sure.
You know, I think if, if, if we get, you know, green lights from, from Lisa, then, you know, we'll just, we can, uh,
Yeah, that's fine.
Start planning it on the third.
Yeah. Okay, that works. Yeah, but it, yeah, either the, cause we're, we're booked from August first to the twenty, I mean, not that we're going anywhere, but we, I could not host fifty or sixty people between the August first and August twenty second.
No worries.
Fair enough.
No worries.
Okay.
Sounds good, thank you. Okay, um, so we had a, an agenda item that was added, um, yesterday to review the request for night work, uh, nighttime work on Union Street. Request includes five to seven nights of milling and overlay the area directly in front of the Public Safety Building. Uh, the request was received at one PM on Tuesday, July eleventh, twenty twenty-two, so this was sort of, um, outside of the, um, normal time that we would be able to, um, have it on our original agenda. So Jen, um, this came up at a Public Safety Building meeting yesterday. You want to talk a little bit about what, sort of, what the, and it's time sensitive too, so.
Sure, I can. Um, so yesterday, hold on, I'm just gonna pull up.
Hold the mic a little closer to you.
So, um, we have a weekly construction meeting on Tuesdays, um, and then we had our monthly building committee meeting. And one of the things that came up, um, we're working on some of the road realignment work. Um, they've been working on the traffic signal for the last week. Unfortunately, because of so, the, the amount of roadwork we have going on, we were unable to fill, um, a police detail. And so our subcontractor came to the site, was thinking we had a police detail and had to leave. Um, and so we just wanted to make sure that we, they had to finish the mast arm on one side and they were gonna really impact one whole lane of traffic. So it wasn't something that we could do without a police detail. Um, and so just in anticipation of our really tight timeline, um, there's some actual, um, milling and overlay work that has to be done. Um, we wanted to have an opportunity to allow for night work. I think it's a really small possibility that that would actually happen. But given our sort of meeting schedule, um, we probably wouldn't have an opportunity to ask for that at our next meeting because really we're making sure that the contractor has this work done before school starts again. That has always been communicated to them. Um, that it has to be done by the end of August completely in that way. The real disruption, uh, you know, for traffic, which really should only be somewhere between three and seven days, just in terms of how long it has to cure before they can come back and line it. Um, has to be done before we have buses and sort of that increased traffic on that, that area. So what we're asking for is, um, approval to possibly do night work. Um, and it's really just impacts, if you look at this, very busy. Um, um, site plan, it's really just the roadway. They're sort of reconfiguring the way the road is aligned just right out in front of where the Public Safety Building is. The, the limits of work are basically, um, right in front of the building. And so if you're looking at this right here, um, this is the hill going up towards the school. Right, right, right here. So it's just right in front as it turns from Union to East Union.
So I have a question as we redo this. Are we gonna change the right, the lighting, the light so that there can be a right on red at that intersection? Is that something we can look at or?
We haven't looked at, I mean, we haven't looked at that.
No, I mean, that is a state law. Um, so this came up before when the infamous question was asked on Facebook, whether it's a right or a red. And we did research that and it's considered a straightaway. That what you think is a right turn on to East Union Street, um, is actually considered a straightaway.
Okay. So even though you are turning because of how Union Street goes and then you.
It makes obvious sense that it's a right turn, but, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
It's the, the old adage, like beware what you ask for.
Exactly.
Well, I, I guess the question is, I mean, it's typically if there's a light, how can that be considered a straightaway?
Well, if you actually look at the geometry of, and, you know, I'm arguing against common sense here.
Right.
Which is difficult, but if you actually look at the geometry, you're, it, that road just continues straight, straight on up the hill. It's, you're actually turning left.
You're turning left to continue into Framingham.
Exactly, on, onto Waverly Street.
Okay, I just, I, I had to ask the question because it just, you get, you, you're sitting there at that light and you've, you know, you're, you're coming, you're basically going off of East Un- Union to get onto East Union, so.
Yeah, it would actually be very, very difficult, I think, with apparatus leaving because they're gonna have to, the lights are gonna have to be coordinated when apparatus is leaving.
Right.
To do that. So it would be really difficult to have, so theoretically, that light would probably be red when the apparatus is leaving the station. And so you don't want to necessarily have someone.
They're not gonna be, again, sort of playing devil's advocate, people aren't gonna be sitting right in front of the building, right? If the, if the apparatus has to come out, won't there?
There's lights.
Isn't there a light further back that stop, that's gonna stop traffic before, so that there's no one in front of it? I mean, if anything, if anything, if someone does get caught there on the red light and all of a sudden the trucks have to come out, you do want them to move. You do want to take.
That's a special circumstance, you know.
I know, but I'm just.
The question tonight is, you know, are we gonna approve the work if needed?
I understand that. It's just that sometimes when a question like this comes up, yeah, have other discussions, Steve. Yeah, I mean, there's no, there's no doubt that we want to approve this, so.
So unless there's any other questions, concerns?
I move that we approve the request, that the, the request for tentative night work on Union Street, um, in front of the Public Safety Building as shown on the map.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now just, um, we'll make sure that if that does happen, and again, I think that's a, a small possibility, um, we'll make sure that the butters are notified.
Yes, please, Mrs. Gilman though.
Yeah, and we did something very similar when we had to impact, um, water and so we have a template letter and we can just, they go, um, Bill will go door to door and just make sure everybody's notified.
Right. And, you know, get it out there publicly as well.
For sure.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Jen. Um, moving on, I think we're up to our priority project update.
Um, did you want me to just talk a, a little bit about the bond documents?
Oh, I'm sorry, yep.
Not, not that I'm, it was in relation to adding the meeting on August third.
Yeah, sorry, I had checked it off because we, I'm like, oh, we're.
We've talked about August third.
Okay.
No, it just, um, I just wanted to give you an update on this because originally what we had projected was actually doing short term borrowing and using one year notes for the first three years of the Mendez project. Um, after looking at the interest rate environment and seeing what that looks like, um, it looks like it would probably be in the town's best interest and in the taxpayers' best interest to go ahead and look at doing a full bar- a borrowing of not of the full amount. We would be shy of about fifteen million dollars, but doing, um, doing a bond issuance of, I think, in total with the school and some other, uh, projects, about forty-seven million dollars. Um, again, that would leave us shy on the building project of fifteen million dollars that we really wouldn't be spending this year anyway. And we would need, we're, we're gonna hold off until we get MSBA reimbursements for some of our previous payments before we know exactly how much we're gonna borrow. My, you know, primary concern is making sure is if we do change, uh, our direction and go with a long term borrowing that we still can meet, um, some of the, that will meet the tax impacts that we had projected out to the community, which I believe was eighty dollars um, for the Mendez project for FY twenty-four. So we're looking at structuring the borrowing to where it would still be that way. But the interest rate environment has changed significantly. We had, um, we had projected utilizing a two percent interest rate. You know, we're seeing recent issuances going up to around three point five, um, which could make a difference. Now, this is a pretty large issuance. So hopefully that would be at our advantage. Now, this is a pretty large issuance, so hopefully that would be at our advantage when we go to the market, and hopefully we'll see a lower interest rate, but, um, anyway, that's where that stands. Okay?
So we don't need to take a vote on that tonight?
Don't need to take a vote on that tonight, but at the August third meeting, we'll have to take a vote and sign all of those documents.
Okay.
So.
So.
I will set aside for that.
So you've been looking at this already, so it's not like now that we're saying, okay, um, yeah, well, I mean, not that we're saying, okay, so you're letting us know that you've been going toward this so that we can have actual loans lot, set up for the August third meeting to sign?
Correct, and it, and it is a change in, in direction of what we had orig- originally projected, so just wanted to inform you and keep you aware of that.
But you're looking to do it because it then will save us hopefully from waiting to do long-term bonds when it's potentially more expensive.
Yeah, 'cause, 'cause you were waiting, it was gonna be like another couple of years before.
It's gonna be another couple of years, yeah.
And so if, you know, if, if we were to do short-term bonds instead of doing, instead of doing this forty-seven million now, the, the tax impact would probably be, you know, we were talking about, you were saying what, like?
Eighty, eighty.
Eighty dollars, it would probably be more, I would say like, what, a hundred and twenty?
Well, we'd like to structure it to where it would still be eighty in the F Y twenty-four, uh, year. Um, and we'll have to see it, what that would look like, you know, with the future years and, and how we could structure it to where we would still try to meet that three hundred and eighty-seven amount that we had originally projected. Um, obviously, you know, there's only so many different ways you can split a, a pie. And, you know, if the interest rates are rising and it's gonna cost a little bit more, then somewhere that's gonna have to show up in the tax bill. Um, but our goal is to find a way to structure this to where, um, again, the impact in F Y twenty-four is not, and, and F Y twenty-three and twenty-four is not, um, above what we had, uh, originally anticipated, and for the rest of the term, um, not significantly more than what we had projected as well.
And is this the kind of thing where if you do, if you've got a favorable rate for the long-term bonding, but then interest rates go back down at some point, could we redo them and get a better rate? Is, I mean, it's like a whole mortgage, right?
We could. So, so it, it's, it's somewhat like a mortgage, mortgage, except usually you have, um, you have to wait a certain period of time before those bonds become callable, what they call callable. Um, and you could look at refinancing, and I believe we're looking at a seven-year term to when it would be a callable, a callable bond of, of seven years.
And is that standard for this kind of bond, seven years, or are there other ones that are less, or?
No, I haven't seen any that are less. Seven's a little bit on the lo, on the, um, lower end of the range.
Okay.
Uh, I think the more recent bond issuances that I've seen have had them callable at around the ten, ten or eleven-year mark.
So this rate that we're gonna be able to lock in for this is gonna be somewhere around the three and a half percent, you think, or is it gonna be?
We'll see, well, that's what we've been seeing in the market, is interest rates, um, true interest cost around three and a half percent.
For triple A communities?
For triple A rated, triple A rated communities, um, and, and double A as well. That's another thing, we do have a rating call on Fri- on Friday, um, to, because we have to go through this as part of the bond issuance process. So hopefully we'll receive another triple A bond rating from Standard and Poor's.
Good. I'm sure we're not the only community that's going through this, 'cause I'm sure there are other communities that have projects that are in the works that are, you know, financially trying to, trying to make the best decisions possible for their community because of the, the interest rate environment.
Yeah, it's, um, it's, it's, it's causing a little bit of consternation throughout the municipal world, as well as, you know, some of the returns in the stock market. Fortunately, we're pretty conservative in our, in what our investments are, uh, so we haven't been affected that much about it. But, yeah, the financial situation globally is, um, pretty interesting right now, to say the least.
Yeah.
It's good to be forward-looking and, you know, try to, um, you know, be fiscally responsible for, for what.
Exactly.
What we're trying to do here, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. So I think now we're up to priority projects.
Yes. Yes, so with downtown, some, some exciting news. If you've been down Front Street, you'll see that they've started installing the granite curbing and started, um, excavating and doing the work and setting up the forms for the sidewalks.
They've poured some sidewalks.
Did they pour some sidewalks this afternoon? Perfect.
Yeah, it looks good.
So, you know, the thing is, is we've got enough granite to do Front Street. Um, we probably will not receive all of our granite until September or October, uh, which is going to put us a little bit in a crunch in terms of paving. But what people should be seeing is the, uh, curbing and sidewalks going in, as well as the brick banding along the side, 'cause remember the sidewalks are gonna be concrete, brick banding, and then curb. Um, should be seeing that along Front Street and then the northern part of Main Street, moving forward.
Yeah, it looks good, what they've done thus far.
Exactly. We're still, uh, we're still in a review period with the M B T A regarding jacking under the tracks. That should be coming to an end. Um, so that's, that's good. Um, what we have also been doing is doing advanced work with regards to the actual building connections. So Bill Paley, our engineer, has been working with the utilities. In fact, we got a sidewalk on Friday to look at each building and look at each connection and what would be necessary to make those connections. So we started work on that. Um, I think many of you, if you've been downtown during the day, you've seen the EverSource trucks running cable through, so that's been, um, it's been a positive development as well. So it's, it's moving along.
It is, yeah, yeah.
Quick ques- oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Quick question, uh, if for some reason we can't get the paving done before the cold weather, it'll have to get pushed out till when?
Um, when the plants open back up, so it would be spring, so that's why, at least like to get some kind of coat down.
Okay.
Even if it's just like a binder coat.
Okay, thank you.
And we're doing a full depth?
No, we're not doing full depth here, so when they did the work in the nineteen eighties, uh, they did nine, nine full inches of asphalt.
Oh my goodness.
Yeah, they did it right when they did the full-depth reconstruction back then.
We don't have to go that deep because of that.
No, what you'll see happen is we're, I believe we're milling off the first six inches, um, and then putting a coat on that.
Okay.
It'll be, be interesting, and the light poles are, we'll start seeing some of the pretty stuff.
Okay.
Nice.
Um, so that's with regards to that. Uh, Jen, do you wanna give an update on the Public Safety Building? Well, not, Jo- Joe's not here, so.
Um, so that project's continued to progress. Um, we still have a substantial completion date of September ninth. Um, working on trying to coordinate how we're going to move in. Um, there'll be, there's lots of moving parts to make sure that that substantial date is, um, is still achieved, and so we're working with our contractor, we're actually meeting with them on Friday to make sure, um, that they're still adhering to that schedule. Um, you'll start to sort of, you know, they've done a little bit of site work, sort of, you'll start to see, they're working on wetlands replication, and then a lot of work inside in terms of making sure that, um, all of those rooms, uh, and floors are ready. Uh, furniture comes mid-August, and so the rooms have to be ready to, to receive that. Um, dispatch consoles and all of that work begins, uh, hopefully in the next week to ten days.
Oh, great.
Yeah, there's been a lot of, I was on a tour, uh, on Monday, and, uh, there's a lot of, uh, a lot of activity inside, uh, lockers are, uh, some lockers installed, uh, some, you know, delivery staging. Um, the evidence, um, um, storage units, the document storage units are, are in. Uh, the, there's a glass wall that was just installed, uh, for the dispatch center, uh, so it's, it's, it's moving along.
Question, I know there was an issue, there was a concern about some of the technology. Has that been resolved, and when is that coming in?
Yeah, so we were, um, informed that there were several things that we had ordered in March that, um, were anticipated, very long lead times, and we were just informed just a couple of weeks ago. Um, Paul Carpenter has been working with the vendor very diligently, and so, um, a piece of that actually showed up, um, last week, which was unanticipated, but great news. Um, the thing that we're most worried about is some of the, um, wireless access points, but I think that between Paul and his team, he's been able to sort of figure out, um, we'll borrow some of the ones that they have in currently in inventory for the real critical areas. Um, all of the desktops will be, you know, hooked directly into the network, so they'll be hardwired in, and so they'll be able to work, um, and then as they come in, uh, Paul's team will actually be able to install them. So he sort of worked around it, but there are definitely, you know, unexpected sort of lead times for that, for the technology.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions on the Public Safety Building? Comments? Okay. Moving along to the Mendez School, um, they have started pouring the concrete on the second floor, so that's moving along nicely. Um, the, uh, Mendez School project team was in front of the Conservation Commission on Monday night to talk about the Influen Infiltration System. There were a couple of concerns raised regards to that, and, um, so our engineer, Evan White, has suggested that, uh, we get a peer review of some of those changes to the system. Um, I have talked to G C G and, and let them know how important that it is to get this done in a timely fashion, and so they've agreed to make sure that they have their peer review done by August twenty-fifth, or July twenty-fifth, excuse me. So, um, so that's moving along as well. I don't know if you had any other?
No, we have a meeting next week, I believe, next Tuesday. We typically meet the third Tuesday of the month. We did have our last meeting, we had a walkthrough of the site before they were doing the concrete, so it's good, good to see it's moving forward, especially 'cause of the timeframe. It's a big building.
It is a big building.
It is.
I went down the construction road the other day just to see, uh, 'cause you can't really see it from, uh, from Concord Street, and it, that is a, it's a big building.
Yep, hundred and ten thousand square feet, I believe.
Something like that. I don't know exactly, but, I mean.
That's a good size.
I drove past, I drove past today, 'cause I was cutting through to go over to the library, and, um, there's so much activity over there, 'cause they're, they're like trenching and doing all sorts of stuff, so I, and I'm sure they're trying to, to get all of that done before. I mean, 'cause it'll, school will be here before we know it, so.
Well, and there are programs, I think, in that, in the Mendez Building for the summer, so they're trying to coordinate, and, and of course, they're, they're under a, a, a strict timeframe. I mean, Public Safety Building, they had a little bit of leeway. They have to be able to do occupancy next summer so that they can remove part of the current Mendez so that they can finish the parking before school opens.
Yeah, my son asked me today, he's like, when is this gonna be done? And I said, it's gonna open next, next fall.
A year from now.
He's like, that's about that.
A year from August.
I said, I like the way that you think.
Both of the pro, both of the building projects are, are, I think, going along well. It's the horizontal ones that.
Well, we're gonna see some, we're gonna see some big progress by the end of the year.
Yes.
You know, I think that's gonna, I think when people start seeing progress made, I, it'll, it will, it will make a difference.
So, moving on to the Valentine Project. Um, so I think since our last meeting, we, we had our public forum. Um, it was fairly well-attended, uh, considering what public forums attendants usually are here in town. Um, it was good to do it hybrid, and, and so we had people here in the audience physically present, and then we also had people online. Um, number of people made comments. Um, I think we all had an opportunity to listen. Didn't think we heard too much new information or, or too many things that we had not heard before. Uh, I think at the end of the conversation, we had, um, agreed that generally, in a way to move forward is to go ahead and fix the roof and the foundation, um, and get that secured and, uh, make sure that that is structurally sound. Um, and then utilizing Kate Valentine's concept as kind of a jumping-off point as a way to start thinking about this property and what the uses for this property can be. Not saying that her proposal is the, the be-all, end-all, and the exact, um, thing is what the final, you know, final product will be, but using that as a jumping-off point, and then getting some feedback on that. Um, and then from that point, looking at doing a feasibility study and looking at seeing what, i- if something like that is possible, or components of that is, are possible. And then as part of that, also getting a high-level estimate. So once we get actual numbers and see what it would cost to actually do something like this, we would then have the opportunity to have a discussion as a community and figure out how we best move forward with that.
I, I think it's possible to do anything. Whether it's viable is another story, and I think that's the value of the feasibility study, because, again, uh, you know, I don't know how many, let's say, performance venues one stretch of, of road can accommodate. I don't know, uh, and I think that's where we would learn that from, from the, uh, from a feasibility study. And, uh, so hopefully we can, we can get that, and I think I also advocate for doing a feasibility for the two buildings downtown as well, to see, you know, what their potential use could be.
Okay.
So, Jen Michael, real quick, and, and this wasn't brought up at the forums, but I've had a few people come to me and say, you know, looking at what was proposed by Kate, by Kate Valentine, it looks, it, you know, very pretty pictures, very nice. Um, the concern is, if we're fixing the foundation, are we fixing the foundation for a barn? Or are we fixing and creating a foundation for some kind of real venue? And I, you know, I know we heard from people, you know, fix the foundation, fix the roof and all that. Um, but if we wanna really be able to do something with the space, is what we're doing just a patch? And we're then gonna have to redo something later on? So that, that's a concern that has been brought up to me about, you know, when we're saying fix the foundation, are we redoing the whole foundation? Are we doing what's been identified? Um, you know, repl- fixing the roof, it should be a roof replacement. There's certainly, there's some, some beams that are damaged up there, so those need to be replaced. Um, and if you're looking at creating a venue there with lighting and equipment and electrical, and are the beams that are there still going to be viable and sturdy enough to create now what we have a potential vision for?
Um, I will say that the bids that we went out for and the bids that we received, um, or the work that we went out for and the bids that we received, are not a permanent solution. Maybe the roof would be a, a permanent solution. But the foundation work is really only partially, um, it's, it's only a partial reconstruction of the foundation. That being said, it's pretty substantial. Um, it's, uh, removing and replacing the back forty feet of sill on the back barn, and then, um, the sixteen feet of sill from the back moving towards the front on both sides of the barn. Um, installing two-by-twelve pa- uh, repairing the basement posts underneath, so pouring, I believe it's twenty, um, yeah, twenty footings, um, for six-by-six footings and posts, um, including a, a new beam just inside the crawl space. And then, um, rebuilding the left-back corner of that stone foundation, so making that repair. And then finally installing two-by-twelve plank flooring on that back sixteen feet of the barn, so the, the part that has collapsed and, and gone through. Now, whether or not we can utilize that as a foundation for the foundation, if you will, and, um, then just look at making replacements to the, um, to the front part of the foundation, I don't know. I don't know that, the answer to that question, yeah.
Yeah, so, so the, the, that's, that's one of my concerns, is I, I hear people saying, oh, let's just, you know, let's make the fixes that we should've made. I get that, but are we then gonna have to throw good money again just to, to do a complete renovation or whatever? And, um, I don't know, I just, that's just my concern, that we're gonna fix it and people are gonna be like, yay, it's fixed, but then when we wanna really go do something with it, we're gonna have to redo and potentially take the barn down to create what we wanna create. So I, I, you know, I, I get what, you know, we wanna, we wanna fix stuff and, and I, you know, um.
Well, you know, I, I think it's a good point, because I think, you know, um, I don't think we hear all, all points of view at a typical forum.
Definitely not.
You know, um, so to go to your point, Yolanda, about some of the conversations you've had, I've had similar conversations, and, and quite honestly, uh, some people have, have s- suggested that we've acquired a money pit. And, uh, you know, so where, where are we going with this? How much, you know, is this Band-Aid the appropriate thing to do? Uh, just because we wanna do something, and, you know, I mean, clearly, we've, we've kind of committed to that.
Right.
Right? So we're, we're locked in at, I think at this point, I think that's fair to say. But, you know, I think there's a lot of concern out there that, that we're, we're committing, uh, you know, lots of money to, to, on the town's dime, because we don't have the ability to, to really go out into the marketplace and find a solution.
Right.
No, I agree. I, I think, I think it's difficult because, because whatever the. No, I agree. I, I think, I think it's difficult because, because whatever the, the final product is going to possibly look like might be two years, three years more down the road. And so the issue is whether or not, you know, the structure can, can withstand it up until that point. So I think, you know, I think we have to, we have to understand that we will, there will be kind of rounds of funding that have to happen with this. And, and so, you know, when we fix the foundation and roof, you know, once we get to a point where we know what we are thinking about even like doing from, you know, from a feasibility standpoint, then we get a, then we get a budget, then we get a number. And we say, okay, this is going to cost three million dollars or whatever it's going to look like. And then how do we, how do we get there? Because that's going to be a process.
And, and, you know, you're right, it's, and there may be an appetite, you know, when we go through this process, there may be an appetite for a debt exclusion to, to fund this. I, you know, not going to speculate on that, maybe, but maybe not.
What's interesting is one of the conversations I had with someone, they said, okay, what was the goal in buying this property? And I said, well, it was sort of twofold. One was to stop the development and the other one was then a potential to create something there. And this person said, okay, the town has done, you know, the town and the community has done the first step. They stopped the development. So now if there are really people interested in creating something there, rather than putting more taxpayer dollars into it, do we encourage investment? And supposedly there is a way to do some kind of lease, I don't know. So I'd like to find that out. If we really can do some kind of lease with a pub, public-private partnership, let's have that discussion. It was alluded to at the forum that somehow there is a possibility to do that, even though it's Article ninety-seven land. Let's find that out and, you know.
It would be a short-term lease, so that would generally mean anything under five years. But I think if, if your thought process with that is, okay, maybe if we do this public-private partnership, that the private entity would take on the costs of renovation and rehabilitation. I do not see any entity wanting to do that for, for something that they're not going to own.
Not necessarily a current private entity, but a 501(c)(3), right? If the, you know, if there's enough people interested in investing in this building and this property to create something. I mean, one of the examples we all use is Hopkinton Center for the Arts. And now the difference there is they are able to do a long-term lease. But they got millions of dollars, they continue to get millions of dollars of people investing in that. A lot of it is not Hopkinton, it's not tax dollars. So I think if there is a way to do some kind of lease, let's figure that out. Let's work with the, you know, let's encourage a 501(c)(3) and, and, you know, but I think the feasibility study could be the first thing.
Well, I think we have been encouraging.
Oh, I know.
The creation of a 501(c)(3). There's been various people, people that have been at the, at the farm forums, all the forums numerous times that have expressed an interest in, in pursuing that. But at this point in time, we don't have anything of any substance. So let's, so that may or may not happen. But I think that's one, one avenue without question. But we do have, we did get a legal ruling or legal analysis from, from Town Council about Article ninety-seven. And it, whatever was said at the, at the forum, I believe was accurate. You can do all kinds of things on Article ninety-seven land, that's not the issue. The issue is, you know, the two issues were, are you, can you sell it?
Right.
Or can you lease it? And as Michael said, the analysis came back that you can short-term lease it.
Right.
Not long-term.
Yep.
So, you know, the idea of, you know, let's say, you know, we had a, we had a presentation from a developer, you know, a year ago. And it was a pretty picture. The presentation wasn't, wasn't up to our, our standards. But, you know, he, he could not, you know, what, what incentive is it for him to do a project like that?
I agree, Steve. I, I agree there. I agree there. What's interesting is I was talking to someone else and they said, if you look at the presentation and, you know, that was given to us over a year ago and you look at the Valentine, you know, what Kate, what Kate Valentine, they're somewhat similar, right? I mean, the ideas, it's, you know, they're pretty pictures. So, you know, I just think we need to keep encouraging people, if you, if you, if you as a community member are interested and you want this done, it can all be on taxpayer dollars. Because we said that, right? When we originally did this, when we voted to buy this, we're like, okay, we're going to buy this to stop the development and then we're going to try to create something so that it's not on taxpayer dollars to continue doing the work. So that's all I have to say about it.
You know, getting back to the immediate issue, that's one of the reasons why I put, so put forward what I proposed.
Yep.
So we need to make sure that we have a structure standing.
Correct, to do something with.
So to do something with and so that we could fundraise for. And so that's why I think it's important to move forward with, with this work. And I haven't even gotten to the, to what the bids were. And then also, if, if, if we're going to talk about costs, sharing costs, things like that, we need to know what those costs are. So we need that high level estimate. You know, certainly not detailed, but something, an estimate similar to what we had when we did the feasibility study for the Public Safety Building.
And for the Mendez and other projects before that.
So, so the bids did come in for all the work. It came in at, the low one was three hundred and fifteen thousand. That does not include any costs associated with bracing the rafters, which was, or replacing the rafters, which was seventeen hundred dollars per rafter. So I would say between that and contingency, we would probably need to look at spending three hundred and fifty thousand dollars with that bid. And then the next bid that came in, we only received two bids, came in at five hundred and thirteen thousand, all-inclusive.
So that includes the replacing of the rafters and stuff?
Replacing of the rafters. The roof, we talked a little bit about the roof. I think there was some question about whether or not the contractors were going to be historically.
Right, right, historical preservation.
We did not require any kind of specialization from the contractors. And what we did try to do is, especially for the roof, look at period-appropriate replacement materials. So instead of utilizing plywood as the sheathing, we're requiring one by twelve rough-sawn boards. And then putting the asphalt shingles on, on top of that. And same thing with the rafters, just using rough-sawn lumber and not necessarily finished lumber. So again, period-appropriate materials.
And that was in the RFP and that's what they've come back with, the cost for those?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. So unless there's any objection, I'm going to move forward with, with going ahead. With, I don't see, I don't see any other choice.
Right.
Oh, I think that makes sense.
Okay, I think that's about it for, for that one.
Did you want to talk about your conversation?
Oh, yes, thank you very much. No, I still want to stay on the Valentine property. So I did have a conversation with Senator Spilka's office today and we talked about bond bills. You know, the senator, I think, is very eager to, to help Ashland out in any way possible. And we talked about the possibility of putting money into a bond bill. We had a very good conversation about bond bills and what they mean and, you know, the likelihood of, of getting funding out of those in the future. I think what might make these bond bills that are coming up a little bit different than previous ones is that there's going to be a mixture of ARPA funds into that, so it's not just bond money in the bond bill. But then also the po, potential of who's going to be in the governor's office in the future might bode well for projects in the future. So, you know, speaking of costs and, and sharing costs associated with the Valentine property, just wanted to take the temperature, does it, does it make sense to include something like design funds in a bond bill for the Valentine project?
As opposed to? Are there other, either not or other, other projects? Other, other projects that we would?
Well, downtown would certainly, this, the one bill that we're talking about is the Economic Development Bond Bill. So I certainly think, you know, in line with our reasoning that what we should do is focus on existing projects as opposed to previous projects.
So the, the bill that the governor put forward that had three point five million for us in, for downtown is not moving forward?
That does not sound like it's moving forward.
No, no, that seems to be clear. I guess, you know, our experience with bond bills, our, I guess, cynicism with bond bills kind of plays into how we would come up with a, item or items to put in a bond bill. You know, if it's something, you know, that is, I guess, I, I guess I would have to say, you know, I'm not optimistic we would ever get a bond bill.
I would second that.
And so what would I put in there, knowing that we're not going to get it? Would I put the Valentine property in there? Would I put something else that, you know, has even less of a, kind of a public, public appeal, I guess. I don't know, you know?
It makes me think of the saying, fool me once, shame on you. Fool me twice, shame on me.
I would never, I would never count on it, ever. You know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't decide to, to move forward with the Valentine project based on a bond bill result either way. Did, did the conversation, did it seem like it would be more feasible to put something more manageable, like smaller projects in? Like versus like, say, three and a half million for, for downtown versus, you know, potentially whatever the design, whatever we would estimate?
I think we would be looking at a few hundred thousand with regards to the design fees as opposed to looking at, hey, can you get us five million for the construction?
Okay, so we're talking small, small amounts.
Relatively, yeah.
Well, I think design fees are reasonable, you know, for the Valentine. I put design fees in for the downtown properties as well.
Yeah?
Yeah.
What design fees do we need for, oh, for the, for the feasibility? For the public, okay, for the two buildings that are about to be vacant? Yeah, I would, I would, I would agree with that, yeah, certainly. And that way, if it doesn't happen, we can then put it in capital moving forward or something like that.
Exactly.
Okay, that sounds good.
Good plan. And then no real update on the Warren District. I, I still need to have a conversation with Dale Hamel about some specifics regarding the Warren Barn. But Hall House should be, Paul Gustafson has received his permit, his building permit, so he should.
It looked like there were trucks there working, I passed by the other day.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
We don't go that way often, so.
They go both ways, coming from on Chestnut, so.
So, want me to just segue into Town Manager Report and before?
Sorry, I have a question before you segue into that. So you get twenty minutes for your priority projects and then you only get ten minutes for your town manager reports.
That's all you'll allow me.
But you went over on the, the twenty minutes.
Okay.
I think we're still doing pretty good on time tonight. I think we're good.
Want to add it on to board reports?
Delete it from board reports.
So before we get to the listed items, I just want to address the trash situation. So as you all have been aware, and if you follow on social media, everybody's been aware, we've had some issues with trash pickup over the last few weeks. We've had some, some missed pickups. We've had some situations where people have not had their trash picked up for, in some cases, some rare cases, a week. So we had a meeting with Waste Management on Monday to talk about these issues and explain our displeasure and explain how this can't happen again. So they went through the process to explain why some of these issues have happened. And it traces back to things that everybody's dealing with right now, labor shortage and also supply chain issues specifically with regards to getting parts for some of the trucks, the older equipment that we have assigned to Ashland. So what they have assured us that they are doing or that they have done is they have moved a newer piece of equipment to Ashland, toward the Ashland Route. And they've also hired five additional people in the region to help support, support Ashland and other regional communities, their, their trash program. We talked about a couple of other things as well. The possibility of maybe switching our trash days from Tuesday through Friday to Monday through Thursday. And the reason why is because it's really, really difficult to find out on Friday that there was a missed pickup. And then you have a weekend that you're having to scramble and.
Overtime.
And overtime and just trying to find people to fill, fill those positions. So we haven't made any changes with regards to that. That was just an idea that was thrown around, thrown around, and I think it's something that Doug and I will, will talk seriously about, so.
Because one of the reasons we moved Tuesday to Friday was that, that way there's no holiday schedule every time there's a Monday holiday.
Right. So we'll have to, we'll have to address, obviously accommodate that. But, you know, looking at that maybe being thirteen Mondays a year, it, it might make sense, given some of the circumstances that we find ourselves in now.
Okay.
It might make sense to do that.
And so if people have, are continuing to have trash issues, they should contact David Miller at DPW?
David Miller at DPW, correct. Okay. So getting on to, I think, a little bit of good news. First, I wanted to discuss energy procurement for our Ashland, our town facilities, specifically gas. So we've currently been paying the Eversource rate for our gas. And so what we, what, what they did was I, I went out and did a competitive procurement for gas. And we were able to come up with pretty good, pretty good figures for our gas, gas contract. If you, if you look at that, if you, if you apply what our rate is through, what it would be through direct energy of fifty-seven cents, if you apply that and compare it to our Eversource rate over the last year, we would have saved seventy-two thousand dollars. Now, do I think we'll save seventy-two thousand dollars a year, every year? I do not, but I do think we'll sub, save substantially.
So is this what we saved or what we would have saved had we done this?
What we would have saved. And I don't necessarily, the forecast for rates, gas rates, is, is not looking like it's going to go any lower.
Right.
So.
So you're looking to change, make a change?
So we made a change with the gas, with our gas supplier. And I think I included in here somewhere a four-year look-back analysis as well. Just don't see it right now. So anyway, I think that's some good news. We should, it's funny, I was doing my self-evaluation and one of the categories there is looking at cost savings and things like that. And I'm like, oh, I haven't really focused on that recently. And so this, this was a good opportunity.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. It's a good thing.
So, I think that'll be.
So when does that take effect?
That'll take effect in November.
Okay.
The next thing is actually directed at Ashland, Town of Ashland Rate, Rate Payers. And that is our community aggregation contract. Just a second. Sorry, this packet is really, really large for this, this week. Well. So typically what we have been able to save Ashland Rate Payers through the Community Aggregation Program averages around versus Eversource's basic service. I believe in twenty twenty-one, we were able to save around a little over, close to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for Ashland Rate Payers. Because of the spike in electricity rates over this first quarter, just this first quarter alone, we've been able to save Ashland Rate Payers six hundred and twenty-seven thousand. I expect that to get, only, only to see that grow as we go into the summer months or as we're into the summer months. And electricity prices are usually higher in those months than it is the winter months. So I'm looking forward to, you know, to seeing what kind of savings we, we can continue to provide Ashland Rate Payers. Again, this is an opt-out program, so most Ashland Rate Payers should be opted in. If you have opted out and you want to opt back in, I would encourage everybody to look at the Community Aggregation section of our website. And that shows you how to, how to opt back in, either by calling direct, or the Energy Supplier Direct, which is Next Era Energy, or through our consultant.
Great, that's good.
Information there. Next is, we wanted to discuss a quarterly newsletter that was recently put out through local town pages. Um, next is, we wanted to discuss a quarterly newsletter that was recently put out through local town pages. Um, now, this was really an idea of, of Ashley's, to do this, uh, kinda departmental newsletter to, um, to residents through the local town pages monthly, paper, and again, doing this on a quarterly basis. Understand it might have been a surprise, uh, to some of you, um, which I apologize for. But, uh, so far, I've received some great feedback in terms of the information that is contained, and just putting things in, in print format and not necessarily relying just on electronic delivery methods, um, has been seen as a positive.
My question slash concern was, when I was talking to someone, they're like, okay, the nineties have called and they want your marketing material back. Um, are we gonna stay with that shiny paper look for it moving forward, or? And I would guess the question is, I mean, I, it was good information, um, but what was the cost? What would the cost be on a quarterly basis? I don't know if that was in a budget anywhere, um.
To produce it, do you remember what the exact cost was, Ashley said? I, I don't either. It was minimal.
Okay.
It was minimal. And then, you know, the ability to insert it into the local.
Right, I mean, I think it worked well going with the local pages like that, I just, you know, it was.
In, in terms of the layout and the design, um, I'm sure that's something that's gonna be refined, probably with every issue that comes out, so.
Cause I, I think with, you know, the issue with town pages is like, you know, you have, first of all, you have to, you know, all of us have put information into town pages, you have to put something out way in advance, and it's not even, you're not even guaranteed that it's gonna get in there. Um, but at least this kinda gives, like a, you know, a, a forum for, you know, updates and what's happening from town. And I, I agree, I think, like, having something that's non-electronic is, is, is like a big, big deal, you know?
No, I, I, like I said, I, I think it was a great idea, I just don't know that that shiny paper format was, you know, that's all.
And I put on my marketing hat, so there's things that I would like, I would love to, to, you know.
Right.
Tweak, but that's just me.
Yeah, I think it's a great.
I think it was a good first one, and I think certainly, you know, input from some other people, you know, I, if it was just Ashley pulling it together, I don't know if she worked with anybody, or, or, or other people, or.
Yeah, all the departments, that she, she worked with.
I think it's a great additional tool, communication tool, and I think for a lot of folks, uh, you know, they miss Ashland Directions.
Right, that had all that stuff.
So, uh, uh, I'm sure it'll, it'll get refined and better as it goes, goes forward.
And it would be good, it's a, it's good to be able to have some place where people know what's going on in town, like to say, okay, well, you know, what is going on with ten fifty Main Street? What is going on with, you know, projects, just even just little blips of what's happening in, in the community without having to either email or, or social media, which a lot of people just, or not. Some people just aren't, you know, aren't there, yeah, so, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Um, the next three items, um, are in regards to three of our collective bargaining agreements, and, um, like I've, I mentioned before, when we were talking about open meeting law violations and, uh, related to that. Um, while contracts do not need to, collective bargaining agreements do not need to be ratified in open session, um, we should discuss some of, or we should notify the public of what some of the details are associated with that, you know, specifically the wages. Just so for people who, if there's anybody still watching, um, at home, um, what happens is that I, uh, negotiate the contracts on behalf of the town, but then those are subjected to, um, the Select Board ratification, um, which happens in executive session. So, again, a vote does not need to happen in open session, but, um, we do, I'm going to discuss just some of the general parameters of the contract in here at this point to, um, to fulfill the obligations that, uh, that were required to fulfill. Um, so first of all, related to the Ashland Police Union, um, I wanted to let people know that the wages included a one percent, um, cost of living increase, um, excuse me, a two percent cost of living increase for the first year, and then one percent cost of living increase each additional year, which could be increased to two percent if motor vehicle excise tax acceded the prior year. Um, so that is with regards to the Ashland Police Union. The next, I believe, is the collective bargaining agreement with the Dispatchers Union, which again, is a, is a newly formed uh, collective bargaining unit with the town. So, again, as it was newly formed, we did not look at, um, cost of living, you know, your typical cost of living agreements based on previous years, but, um, we did come up with a table and then do a, did a general increase of a two percent to each of those steps. Um, then we also assigned each member a five hundred dollar bonus, recognizing that they're gonna have to go through a transition process as we move to a joint dispatch operation. So, that's one. And then also, um, the Clerical Union Agreement was recently signed, and, uh, that contained a two percent increase in each of the three fiscal years that it was covered, so.
Any questions?
Nope.
No, good.
Sounds good.
That's good. Is there anything else that you have under town manager reports? Are you awesome?
I think I'm good.
You're good? Okay. Moving on to board reports.
Okay.
Okay.
Yolanda, do you wanna go first?
Uh, sure, just, um, we were all at the swearing-in, the official, uh, public swearing-in, so I just wanna say a public welcome and congratulations to our new police chief, Cara Rossi, um, knowing that she is one of very few female police chiefs, uh, it's great to see that. Uh, and then just a second, thank you and congratulations to Joanne Duffy on her retirement. It was great having her here. And then just one update, the Metro West Regional Collaborative is having our socia- a social on July twenty-eighth from four thirty to six at Mazie. So, I'd like to extend the invitation to Select Board and Planning Board members to meet other people from the collaborative, and we're not gonna have a regular meeting on, on, on that day. We typically would have one the fourth Thursday of the month, but we've lost our coordinator, we've lost our temporary coordinator. Um, she took a job with the town, so it's been interesting. So, we currently are without an official coordinator, but one of the leadership, Emily Torres Colanine, um, is gonna help us with some stuff. And we potentially are still gonna, are also gonna look at having a landline, which is our bike trail forum. We had one last year in August, and we are potentially gonna have another one in August, and that's being worked on.
So, what was the date of that again?
The twenty-eighth of July from four thirty to six. If you're interested, I'll make sure you get an invite so you can RSVP.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And that's all I have.
Okay. Steve?
Uh, just a couple of things. Uh, number one, the, uh, Pan Mass Challenge is taking place on August sixth and seventh, and, uh, so I just want to extend best wishes to, you know, Ashland riders and to all riders that are out on the road raising. I think the, the amount of money that, uh, the Pan Mass Challenge is looking to, uh, raise this year is sixty-six million dollars. And they always hit, it's amazing, they always hit their number. And, uh, so I know we've got a number of Ashland residents uh, that are riding, uh, I'm, I have ridden in the past, I'm not riding this year, I am volunteering at the Wellesley Babson, um, location, that's one of their, their, um, start points, so, uh, Friday and Saturday of that weekend. So, so good luck to all the riders. Um, I wanna shout out to the, both the Fire Department and the Police Department, they, um, this past, well, actually, right from, from the beginning of this year's market, uh, the Fire Department has had a, had one of the, uh, the engines out there, and it's always a big hit. Uh, typically, it's, it's Captain Lynn, and, and she'll always have a few staff with her, and they hand out, uh, helmets to the kids, and everybody's crawling all over the, the engine, it's great. This Saturday, we had the Police Department handing out bicycle helmets, and I had communicated with Chief Rossi earlier in the week, and, and, uh, I was hoping to have her there as part of the, uh, the festivities, but she was, she had other plans unfortunately, but she said, I'll assign officers to come over, and we had, uh, officers, uh, Dion, Masialo, and Milory there, and they handed out, you know, a hundred bicycle helmets to kids, so it was great. Uh, I want to acknowledge the Friends of the Council on Aging, they hosted a barbecue this past week for the, for the seniors, and, uh, I think there was a hundred seniors there.
Wow.
And, uh, your dad was there.
Yeah, he was.
And, uh, it was, it was good, uh, TJ's catered it, uh, but the crew, uh, the typical crew, uh, that, uh, assists with the lunch was there to help serve and plate and all that stuff, but it was really good. And after that, the, the, the guests, uh, enjoyed an Elvis impersonator. So, uh, that, that looked like a lot of fun. That's when I left, though. And then, the last thing, I, I just wanted to comment on real quickly, I had listened to a, an episode of a, of a local show on local public radio, uh, earlier in the week, and it was only a half hour long, but it was, it was a discussion with a former town manager and a current town manager in Massachusetts. And they were talking about the challenges of, of, of working for a municipal, municipality today. And, and it's all the challenges we've talked about. I, I, I texted Michael, I said, you gotta, you have to listen to this, and which he did. And, uh, you know, the, there was the former town manager of Arlington and the current town manager Sandwich were the guests. And they talked about a lot of the issues, and why people are leaving the industry, and why it's hard. And, and this is not just with, with town management, I mean, I think it's with, with certainly with, with police departments, we're seeing that as well. And, and lots of, I mean, it's, it's, it's difficult working for a, for a town. And, uh, you know, particularly in this era of, of social media, and, you know, all of the instant back and forth and the misinformation, and the intentional misinformation, and, you know, the, the lack of information, and, and just, but it just is a difficult. So, I, I, you know, I think you did listen to it, so I think you had a good.
It didn't help.
Yeah, we had conversations with those gentlemen.
It's like, you're living it, why would you wanna?
Sometimes you wanna validate.
There you go, there you go.
Okay, yeah, not the only one.
No, it's, it's, it, it's a tough gig. I think we, uh, you know, we, we all, I think we understand it, I don't know if, uh, you know, we hope that the public appreciates that as well, so. And that's it.
That's it?
Thank you.
All right, so I, I'm gonna be real short, um, so I'll, we'll get our, under fifteen minutes, board reports in. Um, so the, one thing I wanted to share, we're picking up the Inclusionary Zoning, um,
Project.
Project again, we're gonna meet this next week, next week, um, to talk as a committee, and then we're gonna start um, doing some public outreach and, um, you know, really kind of building more awareness and more discussion around inclusionary zoning for, you know, to make sure that we're, we're in a good place for the November town meeting. So, um, I'll probably put it on a future agenda for us to talk about, probably not until, um, probably beginning of September. So, but I just wanted to give you guys a heads up that, that, you know, we kinda took a little bit of a hiatus, um, following the spring, um, town meeting, but we're gonna pick that back up again, cause it's important to, to, to move that forward. Um, and the other thing I just wanted to mention was that next Saturday, the twenty-third, um, Corner Spot's hosting one of its, um, Cornerstone Events Culture Fest. So, that's gonna be Saturday, the twenty-third at noon, I believe it starts, so, um, they're gonna have dancers and musicians and all sorts of, um, folks there, so hopefully they'll get a good day for it, and, um, I would just encourage folks to, to come out and.
Great.
Good.
It's gonna be a fun day.
Yeah.
Yep.
Um, and then, other than that, I think, I think that's it, so. Um, so I would, um, take a motion to adjourn.
So moved, at nine thirty-two.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, thank you all for, uh, we are now, we are now gonna be adjourned, um, and just to let the public know, our next meeting will be August third, um, and then we will be meeting, um, later in the month on August twenty-first as well.
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth, sorry. It's been a long week.
Great, so.
Okay, so thank you all, and, uh, have a good night.
Good night.
Bye.
Night.